We are live.
Very good. Thank you, Catherine. I'm John Gregg, the mayor of the town of Seabrook Island, and the town council is being convened today, March 22nd, 2022, for the March council meeting. We will proceed in accordance with the agenda. You may notice that I am not present in council chambers, but I will nevertheless preside at the council meeting by tele video conference. And so to begin with the agenda, the first items on the agenda are minutes to be approved. I should say that before we begin, I will ask that the clerk confirm that the notice of this meeting was posted as is appropriate and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act have been satisfied.
They have.
Thank you for that. So back to the agenda again. We do have minutes to be approved, and the first of those are the minutes from the town council meeting of February 22nd, 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
Being moved and seconded that the minutes from the town council meeting of February 22nd, 2022, be approved as presented. Is there any question, comment, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the town council meeting of February 22nd, 2022, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I believe that was unanimous. Very well. Next up, we have the minutes of the Strategic Planning Workshop of Town Council, which was held on March 1st, 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
Some moved.
Is there a second? There is a second. Very well. It has been moved and seconded that the minutes of the town council Strategic Planning Workshop of March 1st, 2022 be approved as presented. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. I'll call for approval. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the town council Strategic Planning Workshop of March 1st, 2022, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 I believe that was also unanimous, so they were as well approved. Last up, we have the minutes from the town council work session of March 8th, 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A... It being moved and seconded that the minutes of the town council work session of March 8th, 2022 be approved as presented. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the town council work session of March 8th, 2022, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I think that was unanimous as well. So all the minutes on the agenda have been approved as presented. Next on the agenda is a report of the town financials. I'll give that report. Total fund balance for the period ending February 28th, 2022 was $6,863,408, an amount about $1,200,504 more than the balance as of February 28th, 2021, and about $1,781,594 more than for the same period of 2020. Unrestricted revenue for February totaled $25,119, and unrestricted revenue for the year totaled $58,943, that amount representing about 4% of the 2022 annual budget and being about $74,302 less than for the same period in 2021. And I believe that that is consistent with the revised due date for license renewals in effect this year. Expenditures for February totaled $77,861, and expenditures for the year totaled $162,232, that amount about 11.5% of the 2022 annual budget. Expenditures for the year were about $42,995 more compared to the same period of 2021. Excess of expenditures over unrestricted revenues was $52,743 for February, and excess of expenditures over revenues was $103,290 for the year, compared to an excess of revenue over expenditures of about $14,008 as of February 28th, 2021. This reflects the reduction in revenues in the period this year as compared to the same period of 2021. Are there any questions concerning the financials? Hearing none. Continuing with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We have three ordinances for the public hearing. I will introduce each ordinance in turn for the public hearing to allow for comments with respect to each. First of all, we have ordinance 2022 day 01, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter 2 Administration, so as to update and modify the general administrative policies and procedures of the town. At this time, I solicit comments of anyone wishing to be heard on the subject of ordinance 2022 day 01. Hearing none, we will proceed to the next item for public hearing, that is ordinance 2022 day 02, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter 18, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 1 in general, so as to amend the provisions related to the use of uniform ordinances, summonses, to amend the provisions related to the designation powers and limitations of town code enforcement officers, to prohibit the giving of false information and false reports to town code enforcement officers, to prohibit the assaulting or resisting of town code enforcement officers, law enforcement officers, and other officials while in the discharge of official duties and other matters related thereto. I now solicit comments in respect of ordinance 2022 day 02. Anyone wishing to comment? Now, in with respect to ordinance 2022 day 02, now is the time. Hearing none, we will now proceed with the last of the three public hearing items, ordinance 2022 day 03, and ordinance to repeal ordinance 2021 dash 12, and to adopt a temporary moratorium on the consideration of zoning app amendments, that is rezonings, annexation requests, and certain subdivision approvals for a period expiring upon the adoption of a new Development Standards Ordinance, so-called DSO, and zoning map, or June 30th, 2022, whichever shall first occur. I will now invite comments in respect of ordinance 2022 day 03. Anyone wishing to comment in respect of ordinance 2022 day 03? Now is the time to comment.
We did have one public comment via email from Catherine Patterson. She was in favor of the ordinance, and she did have a question with regards to setbacks. I believe in the DSO, does the new wording of the 20-foot side yard setback and 30-foot front setback assume that the front of the house faces into the cul-de-sac as was worded and used in the old DSO?
Would you repeat the question, please, Catherine?
Sure. Does the new wording of the 20-foot side yard setback and 30-foot front setback assume that the front of the house faces into the cul-de-sac as was worded and used in the old DSO?
Okay. Joe, are you familiar with that comment?
I am. What I would recommend we do is we hold it until the public comment period on the draft DSO. It's really germane to that ordinance and not the one that's pending before you now, which is the extension of a moratorium. So I would recommend that we hold that until we get to consideration of the draft DSO.
Yes, very well. All right. And with that, I will close the public hearing, and we will now proceed to follow the agenda to citizens and guests, presentations, and comments. We have no... We have been notified of no citizen presentations on the agenda. And as far as comments, we have no requests of citizens to be recognized to make comments at today's meeting, so far as I'm aware. And I will ask that the clerk report citizen comments received in advance of the meeting. Catherine, would you please report those comments?
Sure. The emails that were submitted are available upon request and will be included whenever someone would like to receive a copy of the minutes. These comments have also been forwarded to all council members, and I will just list who has sent us an email. We received one anonymously. We received one from Carmen Gennaro. We received three from Paul McLaughlin, one from Deborah Lehman, Scott and Mary Ann Rawlings, Beth Wright, Susan McLaughlin, and from Dan Court Valesi.
Very well. Those comments, as you said, Catherine, have been provided to all members of council and will be included in the record of comments, save any... I'll say blanking out of the author of a comment who has asked to remain anonymous. The comment itself, I believe, can be made of record and available on the town's website. I believe that is the end of the public comments. Were there any other public comments? Joe, are you aware of any other public comments that have not already been acknowledged?
I believe all the ones I saw were all included to copy to the clerk and all of councils. I'm not aware of any additional offhand. There was one that came in, but I do remember hearing someone else talking about it. So I believe that one was also forwarded to council, but it was thanking a member of our code enforcement staff for removing debris that had washed up on the beach. I think that was last week.
Very well.
Have you guys seen that one? Okay. It's a catch.
All right. Thank you, Joe. We will now proceed with the reports of the standing committees, commissions, and boards. And first, we will have a report for the Community Promotions and Engagement Committee by Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick report on our communications. We had a radio net practice on Sunday, March 20th, at 8:00 PM with 10 Seabrook ham radio operators in attendance. We had two items in tide lines. We had four items in the island connection. And the community, moving on to the Community Promotions and Engagement Committee, we met on March 17th at 1:00 PM in Town Hall. We discussed the community promotion grant applications and awarded $1,500 to the Seabrook Island birders and awarded another $1,000 to the Seabrook Island Turtle Patrol. The committee also discussed Disaster Awareness Day. I believe Joe will be discussing that later, but Kiowa will be hosting it. At that point in time, we didn't have a date. But as soon as we do have a date, which I know now, I will share it with the committee. And we also discussed the community information publication, which basically would be a webpage on the webs... Our website, the town's website, discussing, excuse me, the various who does what. We're kind of postponing that for future agenda, probably sometime in the summer when the town is not so busy with the licensing procedures. And that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And any questions for Pat concerning community promotions and engagement activity? Seeing no one wave their hands and hearing no one, I will conclude that no one has any questions for Pat. So we will now move on to the Environment and Wildlife Committee, and I'll call on Councilwoman Finkie to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee met on Thursday, March 10th, and we continued our discussion about possible changes or needed changes to the town's beach ordinance. That discussion really focused a lot on fishing, possible fishing zones or prohibitions or requirements for fishermen for safety issues. We talked about parasailing and motorized wind-type vehicles on the beach, drones. A lot of discussion about balloons and extending some of our plastic prohibitions onto the beach. And I think we'll continue that discussion about the beach ordinance next month. And Joe, our town administrator, we've discussed about how to proceed. I think what our plan is, is to do a rewrite and have the committee go through it, hopefully endorse it, and then we'll present those changes to council in asking for their approval. And that's my report.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions for Councilwoman Finkie concerning the Environment and Wildlife Committee activity? I take it there are no questions for Jerry. And next up, I will have the report for the Public Safety Committee, and I will call on Councilman Court Valesi to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The... We had a DRC or Disaster Recovery Council meeting on the 10th. We broke it down into two parts, an orientation for new members and a part for the whole committee starting at 10 o'clock that day. We are in the process of updating the manuals, and we're still doing that. We did not have a Public Safety Committee meeting, but their assignment over this time is to review the manual and report back in April of the sections that need to be updated and their... and our concerns about any updating that need to be done. The other part we talked about was the Disaster Awareness Day. We are looking at, it just came out, June 17th right now. So that's not firm, but that's a tentative date for Friday over at Kiowa. I got two meetings scheduled, one tomorrow with Bo Hicket Marina, and we're going to discuss logistics that we could possibly use some of their property during storms. And next month, we are going to have a meeting with the St. John's Fire Commission, and again, looking at how and where they stage their equipment and availability of that equipment to Seabrook Island during any storms. So we're ongoing, trying to make sure that the disaster... any disaster recovery matters are handled. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Court Valesi. One thing, I wanted to make sure I had it, I understood correctly. You referred to the manual, and I believe your references intended to refer to the town's Comprehensive Emergency Plan.
That's correct.
Yes, all right. Very well. Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Court Valesi? Hearing none. Seeing no arms waving. I will conclude that we will now be safe to move on for a report from the Powerway Works Committee, and I will call on Councilman Goldstein to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So at the last meeting here, I updated you on where we stood on the design of Seabrook Island Road. We had kind of narrowed our focus to not only overlaying the road, but targetfully raising certain areas to try to alleviate the flooding. It was also, I think, mentioned that we were going to discuss this with the owner of Bo Hicket Marina, Mike Schuler. So I took the opportunity that Joe and I met with Mr. Schuler. Mr. Schuler was aware that the town's long-term plans included a roundabout at that intersection where the Marina comes out of Endall Bluff Way. So we took the time to go through, would he be interested? What his interest was in the roundabout in the future? He expressed interest that he would actually like the roundabout. It would be beneficial, he thought, to his development, and he would be interested not only in the roundabout, but partnering with the town financially on the roundabout if we could incorporate it in our design now. So that opened up the opportunity to consider not only paving Seabrook Island Road, but doing the roundabout at the same time. So subsequent to that, Joe and I had a quick phone call with ESP engineers, the engineers that were using for the road, to ask them to come up with a few critical things, such as what would be needed for the design, any easements, permits, et cetera, an approximate cost, so that we could then present it to council. This would be the hurdles we'd have to go through to also do a roundabout at the same time we do the road. They... We just talked to them last... this... yesterday, I think. So we haven't got that information. I'll present it to you when I get it. But I think this opens up an opportunity for the town to... for something that was probably long-term planning that we may be able to do with the financial assistance of the Marina. So at this point, I'll report back when we get that information. Mr. Schuler was, so you're aware, was very agreeable, not just to financial assistance, but almost a 50-50 cost sharing. So it's a significant sum that he would be putting into this roundabout. So I think at this point, it's in the town's best interest to pursue this, and we'll see where it goes. So I have... We have told ESP to basically put the design on hiatus until we can determine whether we'd like to incorporate the roundabout into our full design, being aware that if we do do the roundabout, it would probably put us, you know, instead of looking at paving next year or next fall or spring, we'd probably be pushing it another six months to a year just because of the complexity of the project, easements and utilities, permitting and stuff like that. That's where we're at with that.
Okay, Barry, anything further?
That is it. Thank you.
Very well. As far as... I'm wondering whether you have thought to touch base with SPOA about the notion of potentially pursuing the roundabout. I think that's Endall Bluff, isn't it? Endall Bluff and Seabrook Island?
Correct. No, I think... Go ahead.
No, I'm just asking whether you've thought of circling in with talking to... involving in anything with SPOA concerning that potential roundabout?
It is always our intention to talk to everybody that has any kind of vested interest. I think our next discussion, since it would be critical to this, would be the actual property owners at the four corners of where the... where Endall Bluff comes out, because it is almost assured that we're going to need easements. And without their agreement with easements, or at least some amenable solution to an easement, then the likelihood of doing a roundabout becomes much more complicated. So if... I think that's Joe and I's next conversation in short term would be to the owners of Hollow Creek Properties, MUST property owners, and the bank property owners. And we think... They're not all the same, but they're all from a similar group of people. If they're in agreement that they're would be willing to work with us on this, then I think we would probably... The next step would be to get all vested parties, including SPOA, the people that live in the Marina condominiums, and anybody else. We would probably then explain to them what we're looking at doing.
Okay. That's... That's a good approach, as far as I'm concerned. So any other questions for Barry at this time? Hearing none, seeing no hands waved. Next up, we would have reported the Plank Commission. We have no report, to my knowledge. Following that, we have a report for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Again, to my knowledge, we have no report for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that brings me to the reports of the ad hoc committees. I will now inquire of Councilwomen Finkie and Fox as to an update from the Short Term Rental Ad Hoc Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee has, at this point, two meetings planned. That would be our last of the meetings we've been conducting since December. I think we are on schedule, at least I'm on schedule, with the first draft to give to Pat and Joe for review, with hopes that we can present a report to council at our April regular meeting. And I don't know if Pat has anything to add to that or not.
No, no, I don't have anything to add to that.
Well, you know, circling back to the comments that we received and are of record, I am well aware that you have seen the comments that we've received most recently from the public concerning short-term rentals. So I don't know whether... I can't recall who made the comment, but it strikes me that someone had suggested in their comment that they wanted to be sure that the committee was talking to the proponents of limiting or capping short-term rentals. And I don't want to reveal the identity of a person who asked to be anonymous. So I just want to be sure that you are... uh, I just want to be sure that you are, you're familiar with what I'm referring to.
Yes, and certainly the authors of that petition were our first invitation and um ended up actually being our second meeting because of scheduling, but the, that was the first invitation we sent out in December. And then we are doing a meeting with um people who support the petition and the preserve Seabrook effort. Um, those invitations will go out this week, and that will be our last meeting a week from Friday. I think it's April 1st.
Very good. I was sure you were addressing the commenters and uh I guess I was a little surprised to see a comment so late in the process to the effect that uh the committee needs to talk to the opponents, I mean, the proponents of capping short-term rentals. I, I thought that we pretty much in- included in your earlier reports that you were reaching out to everyone and the stakeholders included the proponents of caps, so.
And I'll add, Mr. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll add that part of the whole committee's review and research on this is, you know, looking at the petition and looking at all the comments that came in via emails um about the petition, both pro and con. So that's part of our, you know, look at the issues too, all that information.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for uh Jerry or Pat concerning the short-term rental ad hoc committee? Hearing none. We will now move on to the reports of the town officers and uh that I have as the, my report, I have two items. Uh, first of all, the Seabrook Island Club pools from a recent informal discussions represented the Seabrook Island Club indicated an expected change in procedures for permitting access to club pools by rental guests. So I, I, I thought I'd put that first because it comes right after we're talking about short-term rental regulations. And I, I know that uh some of the commenters have uh advocated that the, the town and Sapoa and the club all need to work together to do something about short-term rentals. And here it turns out that the club is in fact responding to requests in respect of the use of their amenities or overuse as some characterize it. And have devised a new procedure for permitting access to the club pools by rental guests. Next item I have is Seabrook Island Property Association uh from recent informal discussions representative of Sapoa expressed the expectation that arrangements would be made to use the location at the intersection of Andal Bluff Boulevard and Seabrook Island Road as a site for remote issuance of gate passes. This was uh done in 2021, and they're looking at, they're expecting that they will do the same thing uh again this year. Evidently, uh, they had uh had an indication earlier that uh that site was not going to be available to them, but that changed recently, I believe. And so they are now uh contemplating that that will be used again this year as a site for remote issuance of gate passes. And that is the end of my reporting as the mayor. So we will now call on our town administrator to give his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items just for um information. Um, I know I'd said a, a meeting or two ago that it was our hope to have a new buildings and grounds uh manager that we could announce um at today's meeting. I'm, I'm happy after much effort to finally be able to say we have um made an offer to a candidate um who's accepted that offer. Uh, and will begin working with the town. Uh, scheduled start date uh is April 11th. Uh, his name is uh Robert Meyer, um M E Y E R. Uh, he'll be coming to us. Uh, he's for the last um seventeen years. He's been the landscaping um uh maintenance manager for a technical college system um in North Carolina in the, the Thomasville uh area outside of um Greensboro. Um, he's managed a good-sized staff over five hundred acres. Um, and is uh very well-versed in everything that um will need to uh maintain our uh public areas along Seabrook Island Road, Town Hall, um, you know, areas of the beach where we have signage and and other items. So we're very happy to bring him on board. Uh, we look forward to uh his arrival in the next couple of weeks. Um, the second item um regarding our uh code enforcement officers, I'd mentioned a couple of weeks ago that um Tyler had been in the process of reviewing applicants. Tyler, zoning administrator, was in the process of reviewing applicants for uh the um team that we were going to be assembling of part-time code enforcement officers. Um, primary purpose of those positions was to uh enhance our capacity, further enhance our capacity, I should say, um, which started last year when we actually created um Tyler's position, the zoning administrator, um chief code enforcement officer um position. Uh, that was really the first time we had a, an individual who was, you know, dedicated and, and assigned a code enforcement responsibility during regular office hours, Monday through Friday, um eight to four. The next step in implementing um our code enforcement strategy was bringing in some additional resources to provide coverage during the evening and weekend hours. So Tyler had put together a job description and uh we posted that several weeks ago. And um Tyler, do you want to give a quick update on the status of that?
Um, we have, if you look further down in your agenda, we have uh brought up three individuals uh that have all signed their uh their employment offers, uh, got the background check and drug screening results back today, so I have three new faces in the building.
One is a federal law enforcement officer.
Yes.
Uh, one works security for POA, and one uh has worked security for the Seabrook Island Club. So um, one with a, uh, well, two really with a, a broad law enforcement background. One of the, the one who worked uh currently works at the club um is a retired um from the uh county detention center, but also worked in law enforcement for the sheriff's office as well. So uh, three very good individuals, um, two with a, a great deal of familiarity with, with the town and the community uh and the residents. So glad to have those three uh on board.
Do they live locally?
Uh, one is in Johns Island, uh is the closest. Um, so our, our hope is that, you know, if someone's out sick or something like that, you can kind of uh be our, our, him and Ed, if Ed are, yeah, Ed are, my current uh, our current part-time code enforcement officer lives on Johns Island as well. So between those two, you know, we'd hope we can kind of uh, to the extent we can, have a little bit of an on-call type relationship. So if somebody's out sick or we need somebody to come in and pick up some extra hours, or if, you know, there's an emergency or something overnight, we may be able to reach out to them and have them respond at a timely man. So between the three that we um are bringing on board and the one that we already have uh on board, that gives us um four part-time code enforcement officers plus Tyler in a full-time role um Monday through Friday, eight to four um PM. So that'll give us some significant coverage that um, you know, prior to now, we, we just haven't had in the past.
Since they're part-time Joe, are they continuing to work with the club and Sapoa?
Uh, I believe the one with the POA is planning to continue uh the federal law enforcement. He's continuing uh his position. And the other one, I think he's doing some independent freelance stuff on the side and was working part-time with the club. I believe his intent was to uh make this his part-time position.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, anyway, they'll, uh, they'll be involved, uh, of course, with enforcement of um primarily the license permitting and short-term rental regulations. Um, the nice thing about having them is, um, you know, the hours that they'll be here, a lot of times will be when we don't have anyone from Beach Patrol present. So, um, you know, ideally, we'll have them at least once or twice a shift out on the beach looking for uh beach rule violations and, um, but ultimately, they'll be, assuming you formally appoint them later on in the agenda, uh, they'll be able to enforce any violation uh of town ordinance. The next item is a quick update on our short-term um rental permits. Um, as of today, we have five hundred and fifteen uh active short-term rental properties. Um, I know anybody who's sitting here or watching may be wondering, well, you know, last time we did an update, we had something like five hundred and forty. Why do we have five hundred and fifteen? Um, one of the things that um our ordinance specifies for short-term rental permits is that when a property is transferred from one owner to another, um, the uh short-term rental, rental permit in general does not transfer to the new property owner. There are a couple of conditions in there, um, or if it's being transferred to a, a blood relative, if it's being transferred um as a result of someone passing away and it's going to their heirs, if it's a result of a court order, uh, or if it's going to an LLC or trust where uh the prior owner, you know, has some level of interest in the LLC or trust. That's really the only time uh an existing permit could be transferred from um one ownership entity to another. Um, over the course of the year, we've had a lot of properties that have changed hands. Um, and just to date, we've, we've canceled fifty-eight short-term rental permits. So typically, a permit's canceled. Um, we get the majority of them when the new property owner is getting ready to rent it. And um in most cases, their management company will let them know, hey, you know, the, the prior one's expired. You need to go in and get a new short-term rental permit. Uh, so most of the ones that we've identified were actually when the new owner came in to get a new um permit. And when they did that, we canceled the prior permit, issued a new permit in the new owner's name. So we've had fifty-eight uh of those. Um, I had asked um Catherine uh about a month or so ago. Um, you know, once we were about sixty days out or so um from the, the close of twenty twenty-one, uh, if she could go through and pull all of our active short-term rental permits and identify ones where there, where there had been a change of ownership, um, where we did not have the new owner, a, a permit issued to the new owner. Um, so from those, we identified some that were, um, you know, there were a couple were uh one, the, uh, there were two families that owned it. Two bought out the other two, and the other two came off the deep. Um, there were some where it was a a quick claim, um, you know, what's going into a trust, and it's like a one-dollar, five-dollar transaction, not really true property sales. Um, but we did identify, uh, and, and actually, uh, our ordinance allows us, um, if it's been more than thirty days after the transfer took place, if we don't receive any notification, no new permit is issued, um, we can revoke the existing short-term rental permit. Um, so we had thirty-one um short-term rental permits that we uh revoked in the middle of March. So that's how we, we came back down to uh our current number of five hundred and fifteen. Um, as a reminder, this week, uh, all of the renewal applications will be going out, not just for short-term rental properties, but for all businesses operating within the town. Um, so we had mentioned multiple times in the past, as a result of the um state bill that was passed in twenty twenty, uh, all cities and counties with a license uh going forward, a business license going forward, uh, are transitioning to a um May one through April thirtieth license year, whereas in the past, we've always been a, a calendar year license year. We didn't have any discretion. That's now state law. We have to uh, to do that. So um, we are going to uh next week begin um accepting and processing uh renewal applications um for both business licenses and short-term uh rental permits. So uh, any permit that uh is not either renewed or submit an application for renewal by April thirtieth uh will have to um cease renting and cease advertising unless and until they submit a new uh short-term rental permit application and business license uh for the twenty twenty-two slash twenty-three uh license year. So that's five hundred and fifteen. In a few weeks, we'll actually drop back down to zero um when we restart our new uh license and permit year. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, we had talked a couple of weeks ago at our um strategic planning workshop about um the, the possibility of, of looking at and purchasing um some new licensing and permitting software. We actually did have our first um demo uh last week, I think that was, um, with a um one of the, the companies that offers some software. Um, it was really the first one we've looked at. We do plan to, to look at a couple others. Um, but more than anything, it was just kind of an idea, um, um, or, or an opportunity for us to kind of start get the ideas flowing um about what we can use this system to do. Um, the one that we actually looked at, I think, can do everything that we need it to do um at a estimated cost of about thirty thousand dollars per year. Um, so not cheap, but coming from somewhere where um where we did a, a, a software program that was upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, thirty thousand dollars seems like a steal. Uh, but just a, an example of some of the different things that we'd be able to do if, if we pursue this, uh, we can move um straight to online permitting. We can do online business license renewals. Uh, we can do online code enforcement complaints, tracking of code enforcement actions.
Hmm.
Uh, we can do all of our planning and zoning reviews. So uh, the plans get submitted online. Um, basically eliminate paper going forward. Um, so it would make us much, much, much more efficient, uh, but also make it much easier for the public to be able to go in, um, you know, submit their information. Uh, it kind of walks them through every step of the process. Um, and, you know, if it's, if it's a, you know, a permit application and it's missing a document, um you know, our staff member could just go in right in the system and say, you know, this is missing. It sends it back. It automatically contacts them and says, hey, you need to upload this document, or you didn't fill this out right. Um, it could tie to um geo-coding, um, so we can look up very easily basically any permit record for a piece of property. Uh, we can track code enforcement activities over time. So really, really beneficial stuff. So our hope is, um, we, we may have to do a budget amendment this year to do it, but what I would like to do as we, over the next couple of months, look at some of these uh different options um is, is put funding in place and enter into a contract and move forward. Um, ideally with a start, you know, go-live date um by January one. So when we get into our twenty twenty-three license year, all the work is done, all the programming is done. We basically, you know, three to six months out, we can say, okay, coming January one, this is what we're doing. Let's get you uh logged in. Let's get you set up with your credentials where you can start issuing permits, things like that. Um, so that, that's something I, I expect we'll probably be talking about uh more as we go uh through the spring and, and summer months. But I, I did just want to give you uh an update that we had started that process.
Joe?
Yes.
Just one thing. Are are other towns around here using the package that you just mentioned?
Uh, not that particular one. They have a bunch in Georgia uh who are using it. Um, they do not have a South Carolina customer yet. Um, the individual we spoke to was actually based in South Carolina, Hartsville. Um, so obviously familiar with the state, but um, uh, their, their closest customers currently are in Georgia. Uh, one of the ones we'll be reaching out to for a down, in fact, already have reached out to for a demo, is the one who does Keowa um and other communities in the state. So uh, we'd like to have at least two to three um that we can kind of compare and, and, you know, So uh we'd like to have at least two to three um that we can kind of compare and, and, you know, see how the systems operate. Uh, be able to, to do a cost comparison. Um, but uh um some of the ones that are out there are just going to be so far above and beyond what we would ever need. Um, both in terms of the package and the cost. Um, you know, there's probably not a lot of value in, in meeting with those ones. But um our, our focus has kind of been more on the, you know, the, the smaller to medium sized um packages that are out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? On that item. Uh, if not, just two um quick update items. Um, one is a reminder, we have our DSO workshop next uh Tuesday at ten AM. Uh, we are scheduled to have our consultant Paul LeBlanc here uh live and in person for that one. Um, so hopefully everybody will be uh back here for, for that meeting. Uh, as well as our um community shred day uh is scheduled to take place on Friday, April fifteenth. That'll be from ten AM to uh one PM. The uh details uh posted uh on our um website. There's one item that there's been a lot of back and forth and we didn't really get any details until late last week. So it, it didn't make it onto the agenda. So nothing on the agenda for action today, but I did just want to um let council know that we have been contacted by uh the Seabrook Island Club, uh both us and the POA. Uh, there has been some discussion um during the peak summer months about setting up a um shuttle style service to uh try to address some of the um overflow parking issues, particularly um at the beach parking areas uh and at the club. Um, so um Mitchell, the new uh head of the uh club, had reached out to me and to Heather about the possibility of both of our entities participating uh in some type of um shuttle service. So um late Friday, we had gotten a, a brief update on that. Um, they had reached out and looked at putting some pricing together. Uh, looking primarily at the timeframe of June twelfth through August twelfth or nineteenth, about nine or ten weeks. Uh, they would look at doing something from Sunday to Friday. Uh, so not including Saturday. Reason for that was for the rental properties, at least, that's primarily the changeover day. Um, so you have people leaving and then people coming in. And you know, that's typically taking place during the hours when the shuttle would, would run. Um, because they were looking at a timeframe of about ten AM to four PM um with multiple stops um around the island. Um, for one shuttle, they were looking uh in the ballpark at about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, so if that cost was going to be shared among the three entities, ballpark, uh about twenty thousand dollars um per entity. Um, they also had some pricing for um two shuttles, um which was a, a bit higher, probably in the neighborhood of about thirty thousand um per thirty to thirty-five thousand um per entity, depending on the length of service and hours and things like that. Um, the, the two things, if the town was going to consider being a part of it, that we would have to keep in mind is um depending on how we funded it, if we were looking at either state, if we chose to participate. Um, if we were looking at either state or county accommodations tax, which is really the logical place to fund a project like that. Um, you'd have to be able to demonstrate a tourism impact. And I think if we're looking at June, July and August, that's a, a pretty easy box to check. That's when we have the highest concentration of um tourists here on the island. Um, the other one, and this one's a, a little bit trickier. It really depend on how it was structured. You have to be able to demonstrate the public purpose. So if the primary purpose of this is to address the POA and the club's parking issue, that in and of itself, probably not going to rise to the level of, of checking that public purpose box. You can make an argument, but if we were challenged on it, like, don't really know which way that would go. So one of the, the questions I raised was, would there be uh a stop outside the security gates? Whether it's at the real estate office, somewhere up near the marina. Because remember, while we have a lot of overlap between the town and POA, it's not a hundred percent. So our town limits, we serve Bohick and Marina. Uh, we serve the condos up at Bohick and Marina. Uh, we serve uh Landfall Way. We serve uh Bay Point buildings. There are areas that are in our town limits um that are located outside of the gate. So one of the questions we, we raised was, is this something that would go outside of the gate? And if that's the case, it becomes much easier to check that public purpose box because it's going, you know, outside of just the, the POA's boundaries. Now, the question will be whether the POA is going to be on board with opening it up where people could potentially come and take that shuttle and go out to the beach behind the gate. That's a question I, I can't answer, but um I know that's something that they will likely discuss. So I, I, I did say I would take it up with council to, to raise the issue. Um, just as far as background, in our current year's budget, we did have I know I said they're probably going to be looking at the twenty thousand dollar range. This year, unappropriated in state A tax, we have about three thousand. We have in our fund balance over three hundred thousand. So if you wanted to participate, we have money there. Um, it's ultimately a, you know, a question of whether council thinks it's um, you know, best or most appropriate use and whether it checks those, um checks those boxes. Um, if we do participate and we do fund it from state A tax, we will likely need to do a budget amendment uh number one. And then second, uh if we use state A tax, we would have to reconvene our state A tax committee to have them review it uh and make a recommendation before uh we could commit those funds for that project. Um, the other logical choice would be the county A tax. Um, we have in our fund balance right now about forty thousand uh in county uh A tax funds. Uh, again, that's something we likely need to do a budget amendment to uh commit those funds for that particular type project. Um, either of those options, they, they do have to show the, the tourism nexus, whether it's counting uh or state accommodations tax. That's just a requirement uh under state law to use A tax funds. You have to show uh the tourism impact. Um, and shuttles are actually one of the items. Transportation and shuttles are, are explicitly permitted uh under the uh A tax guidelines for uh local projects. So um really the only thing, like I said, that comes into play is, is being able to demonstrate the uh the, the public purpose and the public benefit. So obviously, we're not going to decide anything today because it's not on your agenda um or anything for, uh for a vote. Um, but I, I think what the club is hoping to find out is, is this something that we are interested in and exploring and possibly pursuing? If the answer is no, then we'll just respond back and say, well, you know, no, we're not going to participate this year. Maybe they can submit an application for consideration for uh ATAX next year. Those are typically done um in the summer. Um, but I, I just wanted to throw that out for uh, for discussion. Um, one, to make you aware that this is being discussed, but two, just to get some feedback without necessarily voting a, a specific request up or down. Uh, and then any conversation we have today, I'd be happy to pass that back along to the club and the P.
Yeah, Joe, just one thing to add. About two, three years ago, Sapoa and that was a part of it, we investigated the use of a shuttle. In fact, we went down to Hamadah Dunes and Hilton Head to observe their shuttle system that they have. And basically, it, it was an on-call shuttle, which means that anybody can call it. And then within fifteen minutes, ten fifteen minutes, it would come right to their house, almost like a taxi instead of a loop type of thing. And a lot of it was paid by uh the rentals. Uh, somehow they had a funding mechanism in their rentals so that it was paid for by the tourists themselves as far as that was concerned. I'm sure uh Sapoa has the information concerning that and the reason why we didn't proceed, proceed with that. Hello? Anyway.
Uh, but we, we had received kind of a, a similar comment. Uh, actually, while we were here in the meeting, um Heather had um submitted a, a comment to me and Mitchell um with some, some observations and and issues that they may have, and then also asking if it was going to be an on-demand or just a fixed route type, type system. I, I don't know that we're able to answer that at this point.
Yeah.
But the, the question had been raised. I just want to say that they did a lot, we did a lot of work uh at that point to really look at the concept. Because it was, you know, the parking issues remained from there and so on. We have parking issues then, we still have parking issues now. And we thought maybe it would be able to alleviate some of those uh problems. So anyway. So that's it.
Uh, Joe, for the sake of clarity, you, I know you indicated that the APOX Advisory Committee would have to be reconvened. Was that in only one instance, if there were uh state A tax funds involved, or is that irrespective of whether it's state or county A tax funds?
No, our, our committee only will review um state A tax
Right.
uh appropriation. So they, now the, the county will review um the use of county A tax. But um our A tax committee would only have to convene, uh if you elected to move forward and use state A tax. Now, if you used county, then they wouldn't. If you decided to use general fund balance or, you know, some other non uh A tax source, then, then that would not come into play.
And did you state the amount that we have in the state A tax fund balance?
Uh, it was over three hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay.
And I mean, keep in mind, we do, under state law, we have to spend those funds within two years. So it's not something we can just sit and, and bank indefinitely. So you know, a lot of those came in, were excess surplus funds from last year. So you know, we were able to spend those this year or next year. Um, so it, it, it's not like we, we have this large balance. We can't sit on it forever. We would have to uh identify projects that, you know, we would use those funds for. And I was just talking with, with Barry and Public Works Committee. Um, you know, we had, we, when we were looking at how we could fund um, you know, road improvements, one of the ones we looked at was well, you have all this money sitting in the state A tax fund. There is zero tourism on our island without uh Seabrook Island Road that's accessible. So um, you know, just because there's three hundred thousand dollars sitting there. Um, you know, there may be other priorities that you may want to use those funds for. So I would keep that into consideration as well.
Any other questions for Joe? You're in, done? No one's waiting? All right. Thank you, Joe. Next? Anything further, Joe?
Uh, that was the end of my report.
Very good. Uh, I'll now call on Tyler Newman to give a report for the zoning administrator, since Tyler is a zoning administrator.
I am. I have nothing to report at this time there.
Very well, thank you, Tyler. Uh, town council members, anyone wishing to add to their previous reports or report something that has occurred to them since? Anyone, any council member? You're in silence. I will now ask for a report for the utility commission. I will call on Annie Smith Jones to give the report for the utility commission.
Thank you, Mary. This is our report from our meeting of March sixteenth. Um, we remain for financial, we remain within the normal variation of our budget for the year. Our net income for the month of February was a surplus of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Our capital charges in February totaled fifty-five thousand. After adjusting for our bonds, notes, principal payments, February showed a surplus of twenty-two thousand. On a year-to-date, our net income is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. And after adjusting for our capital expenditures and notes, bonds, principal payments, there's a cash surplus of a hundred and forty-two thousand, three seventy-four. Our available cash as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two is two point nine million. Um, on our operations side, our effluent quality has continued to meet our de-heteromic standards. For the month, uh our daily flow was point three, three hundred and four million gallons per day. Our maximum daily flow was point three eighty-five million gallons per day. Our total effluent and deep well pumped to Seabrook Island Golf courses for irrigation was nine point six million gallons of effluent with zero million gallons of uh water from our deep well. Our tunnel effluent and deep water well pumped a point golf course was three point zero four million gallons of effluent and zero million gallons from the deep well. From the distribution side, Seabrook Island Utility delivered fourteen billion, approximately fourteen million gallons of water a month compared to twelve point nine million gallons last year. Under old business, we talked about the ARCA funds. Um, Commissioner Vincenti gave us an update. Um, we again discussed the need for those funds. Um, particularly, I know at one point during the month, we had purchased a clarifier. These are items that are in our prior capital budget that we have no alternative really, but to go ahead and fund these things. Um, otherwise, you know, our equipment breaks down and we are not able to basically take in the sewage that we, we need to take in and process. Um, so we did buy uh one new clarifier. We put on request looking for a, an area, excuse me, a second era, I mean, eras that we have existing right now. Need to put about sixty thousand into rebuilding those. Um, our clarifiers can take up to three and we have two right now. So uh I know one's, one has three eras and the other one has two or three eras. And during peak months, we're in the process of potentially needing to use both. So um that is something that we've been working on. Uh, we've been funding uh out of our capital expense. And I know we requested through ARCA funds that you consider uh funding that uh some of the costs that we have in there for that. Um, the result, if we don't get funded on this, we'll be taking more money in order to take care of these uh issues and uh including our aging infrastructure is basically to raise rates. Um, along that same lines, I realized when I was uh talking to the mayor the other day. Um, I'd like to put out a, a invitation to council members to come over, make an arrangement, come over and do a tour of the facility. I think maybe if you knew a little bit better of what, what comes in and how it comes in, what we have to do with the processes in order to get it to be a fluid effluent water and then eventually to pump over to um the holding pond for, well, our holding pond and then to the pond on Seabrook Island Road, which eventually becomes the irrigation water for the club. I think if you sort of saw that whole process and what we're doing over there, maybe you'd have a little bit more understanding, particularly in light of the fact that at some point soon, I'm hoping, you will in fact have to take a look at at some point soon, I'm hoping, you will in fact have to take a look at um, proposals before you as far as our funding, um, and decide where that money's going to go. And I would like for you to be well aware of our need. Um, uh, the other, the other thing that, uh, I want to make you aware is that our plant operating in our contract with the current company who, um, we've contracted with for the last five years uh, to manage our operations of the plant, that contract is expiring December first, twenty-twenty-two. So we are now in the process of, uh, putting that up to bid. Um, I've, I have three, uh, site visits this week from potential companies. I have two more site visits next week with potential companies. Um, touring them around the plant and sitting down with the commissioners to discuss um, what they might have to offer us and so forth. So, that is in the process. I want you to be aware of it in case you receive questions or what have you, certainly directly to me, but uh, for you at least to be aware that that is in the process. Uh, our hope and intent is to have a contract uh, company in place, certainly by the conclusion. I think that very much, uh, summarizes my, my, my message to you. Any questions? You take me up on my offer. Yes, I knew, and I knew you need that. I think that's important that you're aware of. I know Barry, you're, you're very familiar with plants such as these, but maybe you'd like to come see us anyway. I think we're doing darker operations up there. Please come.
Thank you, Annie. Any questions for Annie? Uh, anything other than, uh, whether or not, uh, beverages and/or snacks will be served during the excursion?
Well, my budget is rather limited, but I think I could get you water because that's
Fair enough, Annie. Any questions for Annie? Hearing none. Very well, thank you again, Annie. Uh, next up, we will have the, uh, the next item is petitions received, referred, or disposed of. Uh, I'm aware of no petitions having been received. Uh, next up, uh, we will have ordinances for second reading. First of those, ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one. And ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter Two, Administration. So as to update and modify the general administrative policies and procedures of the town. May I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one on second reading as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And having been moved and seconded for approval at second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one, any questions, comments, or discussions concerning ordinance twenty-twenty-two, dash, zero-one? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote for approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one at second reading. All in favor of approval at second reading, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 I believe that was unanimous, Joe. Uh, next item, ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two, and ordinance amending the town code for the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, Chapter Eighteen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One in general. So as to amend the provisions related to the use of uniform ordinance summonses, to amend the provisions related to the designation, powers, and limitations of town code enforcement officers, to prohibit the giving of false information and false reports to town code enforcement officers, to prohibit the assaulting or resisting of town code enforcement officers, law enforcement officers, and other officials while in the discharge of official duties and other matters related there too. May I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two, at second reading as presented? No motion? Interesting. There being no motion, uh, it will be hard to proceed with, excuse me? Well, it appears that we're not going to be able to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-two.
John, I so moved, I moved. I'm not su- I'm not sure the rest of them are with us.
Ah.
We're online and they're not, or?
Okay. Perhaps when town council is able to restore their connection.
Or maybe we're weird and they're not. I, I don't know. We're live on YouTube though. Cause it's record, I see it's recording.
Something changed. Ah, there's Lynn Baker in person.
Okay.
Let's see if I can ring up somebody.
Oh, I was talking to Catherine. I can, uh, oh Catherine. Um, they're frozen. They just got, I just got a message. She said, we are frozen. Please stand by.
Okay, we're standing by.
Okay.
Well, I'm sitting by, so it's, it's virtually the same. There, they're back.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, before the, uh, interruption of our teleconference service, we were in the process of calling for a motion for approval at second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two, and I believe that Pat Fox had moved for approval. Is there a second?
Does he know we didn't hear him?
Yeah.
Apologize, Mr. Mayor. We were frozen and you were, um, trying to do, we had some technical issues as you were reading the title.
Now he looks frozen again.
Yes.
Oh, no.
No, now he's tongue tied.
Did we have a second?
Motion died. Second.
We seconded, didn't he hear us?
Oh, okay, very good. Uh, well, I didn't hear a second, so. We, we were disconnected from, uh, council temporarily. So, all right, having been moved and seconded, that the ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two be approved at second, for second reading as presented. All in favor, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That makes it unanimous. Ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two is approved at second reading as presented. Next up, ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number twenty-twenty-one, dash, one-two, and to adopt a temporary moratorium on the consideration of zoning map amendments, that is rezonings, annexation requests on certain subdivision approvals for a period expiring upon the adoption of a new development standards ordinance, so-called DSO and zoning map or June thirty of twenty-twenty-two, whichever shall occur first. Uh, may I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three for second reading as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. We had a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three for second reading as presented. All in favor, please.
Wait.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, we have submitted, um, some updated language that we recommended. Um, just talking, um, internally, when we have the ordinance to implement the new DSO, um, we originally had, um, in the moratorium that the moratorium would expire upon adoption of the DSO. Uh, we would like to build in a few weeks just to transition from the, from the old to the new, just to give us time to make any updates to whatever forms and procedures and whatnot. Um, so I, I submitted to Catherine and I should put it in the packet, um, and, uh, what we called a second reading version. Um, basically what we were recommending was, uh, changing the title where it said for a period expiring upon the adoption of the DSO, um, to change that to for a period expiring upon the effective date of the new DSO. And then down in the, um, the fourth whereas, um, where it said, um, and certain approvals until the new DSO and zoning map are adopted, we recommended including adopted and in effect. Um, and then down to whereas statements from that where it said the new moratorium will expire upon the adoption of the ordinance adopting the DSO, we recommended striking adoption and changing that to effective date of an ordinance adopting the new DSO. And there was one other location where we had left blank the public hearing date, changing that to today. And then in section three A, where it said the provisions of this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon enactment and shall remain effect until the earlier of the following. It did say upon adoption of the new DSO and zoning map, changing that to upon the effective date of an ordinance adopting a new DSO and zoning map. So, what our plan is, when we bring the, uh, ordinance, the enacting ordinance for the new DSO, uh, we would look at a, uh, January one, uh, effective date. So the current one would sunset basically at close of business on June thirtieth. And then the new one would go into effect when we open up, um, January first.
January thirtieth and January first, July.
The ordinance for second reading was included in the agenda panel. So, members of council should have that ordinance with the revisions that you just summarized. And other than referring to this as ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three for second reading version, I guess, um, I would be satisfied to proceed as we are proceeding. Uh, noting that the second reading version includes certain, uh, adjustments and/or amendments uh, as contrasted to the first reading version. Any objection?
No.
Very well, so. We are now considering approval for second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three, as presented the second reading version. And I ask whether there are any comments, questions, or discussion regarding ordinance twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three, the second reading version. Hearing none. All in favor of approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, day zero-three, the second reading version as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Except for whatever my fumbling was to identify the ordinance, I believe we have actually approved it for second reading. All right. Next up, ordinances for first reading. I'm aware of no ordinances for first reading. Proceeding along on the agenda miscellaneous business, we have resolution twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one. A resolution to adopt the town Seabrook Island strategic priorities for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And I will call for a motion for approval of resolution twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning resolution twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one?
I will just say, Mr. Mayor, for people listening and, and interested in, in, um, this list that council came up with in a special meeting will be posted on the town's website.
It will be posted on the website, as, as we have done in the past. Thank you, Jerry. Uh, all right, so. Uh, I will now call for approval of resolution twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one. All in favor of approval of resolution twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 In twenty-twenty-two, day zero-one is unanimously approved. We now have resolutions twenty-twenty-two, day zero-two to twenty-twenty-two, dash, twenty-four, which are resolutions for the appointment and commissioning of named beach patrol personnel as code enforcement officers of the town for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Seabrook Island. Uh, I don't know if I have a brief summary of all the names of the named candidates for code enforcement officers. Do you, Jody?
You want to run?
Names?
Uh, I do. Um, so these resolutions would apply to, uh, I think we have twenty-three total uh, beach patrol officers who would be authorized to, uh, enforce our ordinances on the beach. Those are Maxwell Alderman, Craig Bachman, Ian Butler, Charles Cross, Robert Egerton, Jacob Frederick, Davis Glasgow, Alexander Huss, Jackson Lucas, Andrew Mappus, Joseph Mensary. I don't know how to say the next one. I would assume it's French, Tropier Marshall. Uh, I apologize to, I haven't met that one, so I don't know their name. Uh, Brian Miller, Jason Mueller, Lindsay O'Toole, Jacob Teller, Shannon Reitner, Michael Siznowski, Susanna Trammell, Malik Varner, Alexander Wall, Riley Walker, and Kelsey Blake Weeks. Uh, each resolution would, uh, take effect, uh, and run for the duration of the beach patrol season, which runs from April first through September thirtieth, uh, unless that individual, uh, is no longer employed, um, with, um, the beach patrol company prior to September thirtieth. Um, but, uh, this would basically give each of those individuals the authority to enforce our ordinance and issue, um, when necessary, an ordinance summons for uh, violation of any of our beach rules.
Thank you, Joe. I now call for a motion for approval of resolutions twenty-twenty-two, dash, zero-two through twenty-twenty-two, dash, twenty-four. Uh, these are resolutions for appointment and commissioning of named beach patrol personnel as code enforcement officers for the town. May I have a motion for approval of the resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There it has been moved and seconded to approve resolutions twenty-twenty-two, dash, zero-two through twenty-twenty-two, dash, two-four for the appointment and commissioning of named beach patrol personnel as code enforcement officers. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the resolutions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolutions twenty twenty-two day zero two through twenty twenty twenty-two day twenty-four. Please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think all the resolutions twenty twenty-two day zero two through twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four have now been approved. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. A resolution for appointment and commissioning of George Blevins as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Seabrook Island. I call for a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Having been moved and seconded that resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five be approved, the resolution for the appointment and commissioning of George Blevins as a code enforcement officer. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I believe resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five has been approved unanimously. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six. A resolution for the appointment and commissioning of Michael Teesling as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Seabrook Island. I'll call for a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six as presented.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six or resolution for the appointment and commissioning of Michael Teesling, Teasing as a code enforcement officer, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I believe resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six has been approved. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven. A resolution for the appointment and commissioning of Michael Williams as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Seabrook Island. I call for a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded for approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good. I think that was also unanimous. So resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven is approved. Next up, we have contract for services with the Low Country Marine Mammal Network for the Dolphin Education Program, a request for approval of a services agreement for the conduct of a so-called Dolphin Education Program by the Low Country Marine Mammal Network. The agreement is substantially the same as the agreement entered in twenty twenty-one. I call for a motion for approval of a contract for services with Low Country Marine Mammal Network for the so-called Dolphin Education Program.
Some moved.
Second.
A second, seconded, has been moved and seconded for approval of an agreement for, a contract for services for, with the country marine mammal network for a dolphin education program. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion concerning the proposed contract for services? Jerry, you may want to chime in here. I don't know.
I really don't have anything to say. I mean, other than the change of dates, it is the same contract we had with them last year. Perhaps maybe the person Wayne McPhee, I don't know if that's a new name or not, but otherwise same contract. I think they do a great job. So yeah, we need to approve it, get them out on the beach.
Yeah, the, the only thing I changed from last year's version, we said that it would that the service on the beach would start on a certain date. And I don't know if they were actually out there on that specific date, so we put on or around, so it might be, you know, within a couple of days of that specific date. And just a reminder, this was funded out of state ATAX and will be paid for out of state pay tax funds in this year's budget.
Very good. Having been moved, seconded, we've had discussion now, I believe so. We will proceed to a vote for approval of a contract for services with Low Country Marine Mammal Network for conduct of the Dolphin Education Program as has been done in the past. And I believe, Joe, you had specified the start date for the services as an on or around date in April of twenty twenty-two. All in favor, please signify your approval of entry into this contract by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Joe, we approved entry into the contract. Thank you. Next up. A vehicle purchase. We have a request for approval of purchase of a new pickup truck in contemplation, I believe, Joe, this is true, in contemplation of expansion of code enforcement within the town. Joe, I believe that you touched on this during the work session. And I would invite you to comment as you deem appropriate at this time.
Yeah, I'm going to rehash what I had said at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, but just a little bit of additional information. I use the term new vehicle in the agenda loosely. What I would, would request is approval from council to use some of the surplus funds from our vehicle replacement fund to purchase a vehicle. It may be a new vehicle, it may be a couple of year old vehicle. Just searching around the last two weeks, it is very difficult to find what we're looking for on the new market right now. We have identified a couple, you know, maybe two, three, I think one was even four years old. We're trying to match the, you know, as close as we can, the model, the style. The functionality, so we'd need to have four-wheel drive. Ideally, we'd have a white one to match all of our existing vehicles. So it's a very narrow pool of what's out there. So if, if we can find something new, and I think that's our preference, but if we can, then we would look at purchasing something probably in the two to four years of age if we have to. And then also the prices have gone up pretty substantially from where they were when we bought our current pickup truck in twenty nineteen. I think we got that one for right around and maybe even a little below thirty thousand. We did look at the state contract. Right now, the state's basically saying you probably can't even get a vehicle off the state contract right now. They're just not, not out there. There was one that we found, but you'd have to go all the way down to central Florida to get it. Not really ideal, but so we would like to, to get council to approve an up to amount, up to, and I'll just throw out forty thousand. I feel like we would be able to find one for quite a bit less than that, but that would be a worst case scenario. If it was something new with add-ons and options, tax and everything. But ideally, we'd be looking in the thirty to thirty-four thousand dollar range, kind of on par with what we have, but, but worst case, I'd like to have the flexibility. You know, if we can find something new to go up to forty thousand for purchase of a new pickup truck.
So you prefer.
Preference is new because you get it, you have the warranty, it's brand new. But if, if we can, or if it's cost prohibitive, I mean, I have no issue with finding something that's a couple of years old, as long as it's, you know, good condition, no major issues, accidents, low mileage, those type things. I wouldn't have an issue going with something.
Should we, in order to possibly get one new, go above forty thousand, you know, in other words, and should the request be rewarded to read, let's say, a new pickup truck not to exceed fifty thousand dollars or whatever? And that gives you enough flexibility, and if you do find something new that is forty thousand, forty, you know, you're not coming back to us. Make sure you give yourself enough flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see it coming anywhere near that, but I have no objection to, to going higher than that.
And how much money do we have in our placement plan?
It was like seventy.
Okay, so that's what, and that's what we would be using, right?
Yeah.
I mean, considering you don't know what the market's bearing right now, it makes sense to give yourself enough room. So we don't have to come back to this and say, oh, I gotta go.
Yes, it's sixty-four, but I don't know if our accountants made the transfers yet, that we do. When we switch our budget year, so I want to say it's seventy-nine thousand. But it's somewhere there about.
Anyway, would the resolution be reworded to reflect that?
Well, it's just a verbal resolution, so there's not anything written.
Okay.
All right, very good. They have a motion for approval of purchase of a pickup truck for a cost of up to fifty thousand dollars. I don't know that we needed to specify anything other than that, except to the effect that funds to be applied from the vehicle dedicated vehicle purchase fund, the town's dedicated vehicle purchase fund. And I'm, is there a second? A second. Very well, so it had been moved and seconded to approve purchase of a pickup truck at a cost of not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, up to fifty thousand dollars. And the funds to be taken from the town's dedicated fund for vehicle purchases. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Please signify your approval for purchase of a pickup truck at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars as discussed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Joe, approved. Thank you. Next up, we have request for approval of a policy and expenditures to provide mobile, that is cellular telephone service for town employees. I believe the policy itself was provided to members of council sometime earlier today. And the cost breakdown was included in the agenda package, so. Joe, again, this is yours. Would you like to elucidate further in respect of the policy and the cost breakdown?
Would be happy to elucidate. The purpose, the purpose of this, I don't think I've ever been asked to elucidate before. The purpose of this policy, we, we had talked briefly at our workshop a couple of weeks ago. As we're bringing on several new code enforcement officers, a full-time and then also a part-time landscape professional. And then those of us who have current phones, they're like six, seven years old. It, it just seemed like a logical time to go back and revisit our cell phone policy. I know at the, the last meeting we had talked about, you know, looking at the side-by-side cost comparison. So we did include in the packet kind of what we were looking at based on our, our best estimate of cost. Option one is if the town continued to provide cell phones and pay for the, the monthly plan for all the employees who would have access to a phone. The alternative option, option two, was if the town moved to an allowance program for cell phones. When we ran the numbers, just looking at, you know, from our existing contract. The upfront cost of equipping, equipping the full and part-time positions with, we used an iPhone thirteen, which is the, the current model. It's not, you know, the Pro, not the Max, not the top of the line, but, you know, just kind of the basic iPhone. We're looking at with tax and everything, I think they're three forty-nine pre-tax under our contract with tax and, and whatnot, we're looking at a little over three hundred and eighty dollars per phone. So for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that would be a total cost of a little over three thousand dollars upfront. And then our out-of-pocket cost over twenty-four months, so that would be paid monthly, but collectively over twenty-four months for the, the, kind of the full-time and the, the full-year part-timers. We're looking at just under fifty dollars per month, which includes the taxes. So for the, the full-time, it's about twelve hundred dollars per person over two years. And I, I put in for, for part-time code enforcement seasonal. Based on our code enforcement plan, we do scale it back some in the, the off-season, October through March period. So what we have the ability to do under our cellphone plan is we can actually suspend service for a period of time. So for those, I assume twelve months, so six months on, six months off, six months on, six months off. So those ones were about six hundred dollars over two years. So under the town provided plan, cost upfront capital and well, not really capital, but upfront equipment, and then the total over twenty-four months for service, we'd be looking at about eleven thousand four hundred dollars. If we were to switch over to a allowance program. Basically, what we would do, and, and I thank Catherine for all of her time and effort spent on it, she did the lion's share of of putting the, the policy together, looking at, you know, what some of the other communities are doing. And it seems to be in general, most of them are, are around a fifty dollar per month cellphone allowance. If we had an employee that maybe didn't need texting and data, it was just straight up, you know, voice plan. It would be thirty dollars. And if you look at the policy, we had a thirty and a fifty dollar. I don't really know, at least at this point, but we would have anybody on the, the thirty dollar one. You know, because if we have code enforcement officers out around the island, they're going to be taking pictures and stuff and you know, sending it to Tyler when he's not here. So I, I'm just assuming all of ours would probably be on the fifty dollar plan, which is the worst case scenario. For that one, if we had an across-the-board fifty dollar monthly cellphone allowance, basically, we're at eighty-four hundred dollars. So the savings is going to be on the equipment side. Not having to, you know, pay the upfront cost and, you know, when we started. And then also having to keep those things up and going and operational and everything and replaced every two to three years. So our recommendation is that we switch over to a cellphone. Uh, replaced every two to three years, so our recommendation is that we, uh, switch over to a, um, cellphone, uh, allowance plan. Um, and then just kind of looking at the plan, um, that we had sent out. Uh, we basically have a, a purpose statement, so why the plan exists, um, to outline the eligibility, criteria, obligations, and expect- expectations. For employees who receive a monthly reimbursement for the business use of a personal cellphone. Um, as far as eligibility, uh, it's basically if there's an employee that we determine we need or may need to. Um, have them accessible for contact either while they're away from town hall or during, um, outside of normal working hours. That we would set up a cellphone reimbursement, so they would basically bring their phone, their plan. Um, and then the town would reimburse them a portion of their cost, uh, to offset for the business use, uh, of their phone. Uh, in order to be considered, they would have to complete and submit a cellphone reimbursement agreement, which was included, um, in the document. Um, the way we have it set up is a town administrator or designated, um, would be responsible for reviewing and approving. Uh, requests, so basically making a determination, does this person? Need a cellphone, do they have the right equipment, the right plan to meet the needs of the position? Um, and then the town administrator would have the authority to, uh, review and approve. Um, because I historically have had a town phone, I would not wanna be in a position where I'm reviewing. And approving my own, that's an ethical issue, uh, so I put in there that if it's the town administrator. Who's getting a reimbursement, then the town administrator's reimbursement would be approved by the, um, mayor. Um, but that, in general, the town administrator would have the final authority to approve, deny, modify, and. When necessary, terminate an active reimbursement plan. Um. I, I did wanna put in, and this was something that, in, in all the ones that I know Catherine would, that there wasn't a, a provision for. When you have the event of an emergency, and that was something, you know, we, we typically will. Work into different things where we have special requirements to the event, uh, of an actual emergency, so I, I felt it was important just to put a sentence in there. Um, it says, in the event of an actual or pending emergency, the town administrator. She'll be authorized to waive all or some of the requirements stated herein. If he or she determines such action to be necessary to maintain town operations, so. What that would mean is if we're all evacuated, there's a hurricane coming, and we need to main con- maintain contact with all of our employees. Basically, I have, you know, discretion if we need to pay out an allowance for one month so that we can maintain that contact. Uh, if somebody can't work here, they're having to work remotely or something, because the building's been destroyed, you know, just having that ability to, uh, to, to do that. Um, that the purpose of the plan is not to pay an employee's full. Um, you know, fully, um, their obligation, but to offset a portion, uh, of, of their cost. Um, that it's a reimbursed expense, um, that any emplo- any payment made to an employee is a non-taxable benefit. Um, it's not considered part of their base salary. And used to determine raises and benefits of things of that nature. Um, as far as what we would expect the employee to be responsible for, uh, they would have to obtain, so they're bringing their own, um, device. Um, and we've, we've left it kind of generic, just to leave some discretion. That the town administrator would make a determination that that phone, whether it's a standard cellphone or a smartphone. Uh, is capable of handling the mobile communication needs of that particular position. Um, that the employee is responsible for keeping it active and in good working order as long as the agreement remains in place. That they're responsible for obtaining and paying for, uh, a service plan with the provider that provides an acceptable level of coverage, um, within the community. Uh, that they're responsible for any supplemental accessories, insurance, or equipment that they may need. Um, that the town administrator or clerk can, um, demand receipts or verification, uh, upon request. Um. That they must provide the clerk treasurer with forty-eight, within forty-eight hours. Uh, notice of any change to their device, their plan, service status, or the cellphone number. Uh, but they have to basically keep it on their person or within a reasonable distance, um. When they're either working or required to be on-call or available. Um, that it's their phone, it's a personal item, and that they're responsible for any cost with replacing, repairing, um, their phone. And, um, you know, if they're terminated, or, you know, there's a change, then. They're responsible for, you know, whatever's left to get out of that contract, or, you know, to get them through the end of the month. Um, we put in there that the reimbursements would be made, uh, monthly, we set a thirty and a fifty-dollar plan. Uh, I assume, uh, we'll probably, at least for now, have everyone on the full, uh, smartphone with voice text and data. Plan, that could change, but worst case, I think we'll assume everybody will be on that fifty-dollar, um, per month. Um. And I did also wanna put in that there may be a program or an app or something that. You know, if we're using it for business purposes, if there's a cost for them to put that on their phone, it's reasonable, the town will reimburse them for. Whatever that cost would be, so some apps might have a four ninety-nine fee or something in order to download it. Uh, I think right now, most of the ones, if not all the ones we're using are free, but if we had a need for one in the future, we just put, um, some general, um, provision in there. Um. The general use conditions that, um, you know, they're responsible for knowing and understanding what the policy is. Um, they have to observe safe vehicle operation. Pull off the side of the road when we're making a call, if it's a non-emergency situation. Um, they can't use it in any manner contrary to state, local, or federal laws. If they're charged with a traffic violation while they're using the phone, that's their responsibility. Um, it will seize upon termination of employment. Or upon the direction of the town administrator, so if they've moved into another position that doesn't need a phone, then, you know, they can lose their, uh, cellphone reimbursement. Um, and then, lastly, is just, uh, uh, an acknowledgement that if they receive a reimbursement. Um, they're aware that any voice call, data, metadata, emails, texts, and other forms of communication. Uh, even though it's on their personal device, if it's done in the conduct of town business, uh, it is subject to, uh, freedom of information, so. Uh, we will be trying to get everything, um, you know, emails and messages to go through the town email address, which can be set up on their phones. Um, they'll have access to our phone network to send. As if they were sitting here at a town hall at their desk to make calls and send text messages, so we'll. You know, try to be doing everything that way, where, uh, we can have access to all that information. Uh, if needed, and then the last page of the document is just the, um, uh, a copy of the reimbursement agreement. Um, just by signing, they indicate that they've read, understand, and agree, um, with the cellphone policy. Uh, they'll put their name and title, signature date, which plan they're operating on. Will ask for the model, um, and the service provider of their cellphone. Um, and then again, um. You know, the town administrator would have the ability, uh, in most situations to sign off on those, once we have them. They go to the clerk, she'll set them up, and then, and lessen until there's a change, uh, there would be a monthly, uh, reimbursement paid to. Uh, each active employee, so that's the direction I would like to move in, and our request is that. Um, you adopt this policy and allow us to move forward.
Very good, thank you, Joe, um, any questions for Joe? Any questions, anyone? No questions? Gosh, Joe. It was so thoroughly explained that no one has any questions whatsoever. That was an elucidation, uh, I will say.
That, that just means I talked too long and it's four-thirty and everybody is ready to go.
Uh, now, Joe, all right, so. I will now call for a motion for approval of the policy. And, uh, I guess you could say. The proposed expenditures contemplated thereby for providing. Mobile, that is cellular telephone service for town employees as described. Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Uh, having been moved and seconded, that, uh, the policy and, uh, related expenditures. Be approved as described, any questions, comments, or discussion in that regard? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the policy and related expenditures? For providing mobile, that is cellular telephone service for town employees. As described, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, it's approved, Joe, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we are now down to the final. Second and final public comments period. Of the council meeting. Anyone participating in the video conference and wishing to comment concerning today's proceedings. May do so by clicking the raise hand button under the participants tab. Anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning today's proceedings may do so by pressing star nine. To raise your hand, each speaker. Is asked to raise their hand to speak only once. Every effort will be made to call on all speakers in the order they have raised their hands when called on to speak. Please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you and do not hear anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself, if we still cannot hear you. We will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which. To, uh, provide their comments, each speaker will be informed when there are thirty seconds remaining. Once a lot of time expires, the. Speaker's audio will be again, will again be muted. May inquire as to whether any citizen comments were received during the course of the meeting. Catherine, any comments come in? No.
We have not.
All right, anyone indicating that they wish to comment at this time?
No, nobody has wished to comment.
All right. There be no, apparently there being no, no one wishing to make public comments. I will now invite council members to comment. On any topic concerning today's proceedings if they feel they would like to opine on more fully. Any member of council? Please. Anyone? Hearing none. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting for March twenty-twenty-two.
Some moved.
Is that, is there a?
Okay.
Second. Being moved and seconded, that we adjourn the council meeting for March of twenty-twenty-two. All in favor of adjournment, please signify your approval to adjourn by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you all very much.